They don't stop back.
I called this December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two council meeting order. Please call the roll.
Boris Fromme?
Here.
Dick Marshke?
Here.
Jim Bansman?
Here.
Marie Fenske?
Here.
Don Miller?
Here.
Bryce Remy?
Here.
Now, please rise and join me in the approach of the minutes.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of this law, liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to act on the council minutes of November sixteenth to November twenty-second?
Second.
Are there any discussion on the, uh, motion? If not, in favor, I, Rose Day, please call the roll.
Jim Bansman?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Don Miller?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Boris Fromme?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Agenda five, public appearances, limited to three-minute timeframe per individual. Do we have any public appearances? Last call, public appearances. Great. Move on to agenda six, personnel finance committee first.
Personnel finance met December fifteenth, five o'clock, myself, Miller, present. Uh, no public appearances, we approved the November minutes. Uh, we have a motion for reimbursement of street use permit fees for the Horicon Historical Society. Uh, another motion to approve change order number two for the Sopper Sewer Water LLC, for the two thousand twenty-two South Cedar Mill Street reconstruction. Another motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three agreement for the senior dining program. Uh, motion to approve write-off in ambulance and warrant fee invoices. A discussion regarding the two thousand twenty-three police staffing. Uh, motion to approve budget transfer for purchase of a Protech SP ten L snow pusher loader. Uh, motion to approve the EMS agreement with Tokowski. Motion to approve capital, I'm sorry, uh, fund the purchase of a stinger spike system for police department and motion to fund additional compost grading. Another motion to approve budget transfer for purchasing street signs. Motion to increase the police overlay, I'm sorry, uh, another budget transfer for police administration. Uh, fund a Ruder AR five-five-six accessories. Um, other twenty-two budget transfers were presented and approved. Uh, motion to budget transfer to fund the purchase of a radar unit. Motion to approve write-off in delinquency of personal property taxes. A motion to, um, move funds again for payment of the two thousand twenty-two extrication training for the fire department. A motion for budget transfer to purchase extrication gear. We had a motion to approve the November bills and set the next meeting for January seventeenth at five P M. Say all, and adjourn the closed session at six oh four P M. We're interviewing candidates for the wastewater water operator three in charge position.
Thank you. Agenda seven, public works and development committee, Jim?
Public Works and Development Committee was called for at the six P M by Chairman Jim Bansman. Members present, Bansman, Fenske, and Miller. Members absent, none. Motion by Miller, second by Fenske to approve the minutes for November third, twenty twenty-two. All voting aye, motion carried. Public appearances, none. D P W update, Christmas decorating is completed, leaf pickup is completed, all equipment is ready for soil removal. Animal safety training was completed. Uh, set the next meeting for Thursday, January fifth, two thousand twenty-three, eight at six P M at the D P W conference room. Motion by Miller, second by Fenske to adjourn, all voting aye, meeting adjourned at six twenty-five P M.
Motion. Agenda eight, public safety committee, Dick?
Uh, public safety committee met, um, December thirteenth, um, at four P M. Uh, all members were present. Motion by Marshke, second by Fenske to approve the November eighth minutes. Motion carried, uh, under public appearances. Two residents, uh, came in and talked about overnight parking and general parking at business at three oh one Lake Street. There was no monthly reports. Under the East Lake Street Task Force update, discussed when the new signage would be installed on crosswalks on Easy Lake Street and future educational events. Um, discuss winter parking, discuss speed deterrence. Set next meeting date for Tuesday, January tenth at six P M at the Public Safety Building. Motion to adjourn by Marshke, second by Fenske, meeting adjourned at four fifty-four.
Thank you. Divine Park and Rec Report, Bryce?
The Park and Recreation Meeting was called to order at six P M by Chairperson Remy. Members present, Remy, Marshke, Mookie, and Boy, members absent, crew. There is a motion by Remy and seconded by Mookie to approve the minutes from November ninth, two thousand twenty-two. All voted aye, motion carried. There were no public appearances. Under the parks report, Bowling Green Park roof replacement budget was used for two thousand twenty-two. The Disher Park Dance Hall roof repair estimate is a hundred thirty thousand. Banner High is getting estimates to repair the entire building. The products in our report drew provided cheap with local prices of competing pools. Any additional numbers can be added to family pool pass for ten dollars each. I'd like to set family pool pass limit to seven family members. I would like to increase family pool passes from one hundred twenty-five to a hundred fifty dollars. Recreation report, Jason Diney's last day was Monday, December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. No reporter interim director to our knowledge at this time. Uh, amendments to the park plan, there is no amendments requested. Uh, the group vice support was excited to keep up, continuing the momentum from this. Uh, motion by Remy, seconded by Boy to approve the park plan, all voted aye, motion carried. Uh, Banner High will get an estimate on the concrete at the memorial at Bowling Green Park and how much of the cost to repair or replace. We'll investigate if entire things we prepare or replace are just the six posts. Set next meeting day for Wednesday, January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, at six P M at D P W conference room. Motion to adjourn by Remy, seconded by Boy, all voted aye, meeting adjourned at six forty-seven P M.
Flight commission, Don?
Uh, there is no report, we had no meeting.
All right. And me, we got two thousand twenty-two, this is our last, uh, meeting of two thousand twenty-two, so some things that, you know, we accomplished over the last year. City View is all a go, which is fantastic. We have something that might be going in the Marsh and Crossing, we got two department heads, new operator in charge, Swordfield, so there's a lot of really neat things that was accomplished in Horicon over the last year, hopefully, two thousand twenty-three is just as great. Uh, everyone be careful Thursday through Saturday. Work with the P D and with Cody to determine how we're gonna attack it as a city. And everyone have a happy holidays and I look forward to, uh, seeing everybody in two thousand twenty-three. There, we will move on to agenda item twelve, which is the presentation on the DHS cyber assessment we did here at Horicon at the wastewater treatment facility in the Water Works. We got Michael David, who is with the National Guard but lives here at Horicon, and Matt Raisi, our la- our multi-talented, does everything for us person. So, if you guys wanna take it over, please do.
Uh, so a couple months ago, we had an assessment done by CISA, which is Division of the Department of Homeland Security. Uh, there's a couple pages in front of you going a little bit more into that, I'm not trying to keep it short and sweet. Uh, basically, it was a two hundred and ninety-nine questions covering everything from identifying assets that we have, uh, which could be anything from as big as a well to a computer sitting on your desk. Uh, going over our practices as low as locking a door or hardware or software protection that we have, any kind of training to, uh, get staff to be aware of any kind of threats that might be in place. Um, and any kind of continuity plans to deal with any kind of interruptions that might happen. That could be anything from Mother Nature knocking out power or me walking out the door and saying goodbye forever, never talking to you again, or just a pure equipment failure, or even a cyber attack, say somebody comes in with ransomware, takes control of everything you have, then how do you deal with it? So, having those continuity plans are a way to at least have some kind of response to all of it. Um, I don't know if you have anything to add on that. Basically, uh, the last two pages that you have, last three, sorry, have some graphs. Um, the last two will show you our aver- our answers, how we answer compared to the national average of everybody who answered this. You can see we're on the lower end of it, it wasn't really a surprise, I mean, it's not quite as bad as it looks, but it's not great either. Basically, we know what assets we have, there's a little bit of plans in place, those usually exist from problems that have come up and we've dealt with them and we know what to do in the future going forward, but there's a lot that's unchecked. Um, since we've also done this, we have, uh, Josh and myself has signed up for vulnerability scanning through CISA. Basically, we gave them our I P for down at the wastewater plant and they're gonna go through scan, see anything that they can find, what's gonna be vulnerable to attack, and then they'll give us a report, which we haven't gotten yet, I was hoping to have it for tonight, but, uh, once we get that report, we'll know basically where we sit, what's really at risk, how can we move forward from there, where do we start? Uh, there's a lot of questions, I mean, everything's gonna boil down to spending money, but you gotta start somewhere. We're pretty low on the total poll here. Um, and if you ever look at something, say we had a ransomware attack and you were to lose everything, uh, just for one example, basically, an average amount, say, is a hundred and sixty-one dollars per record that were to be stolen or lost, so just say, uh, payments, water bill payments, say you you lost the whole history loss. So, a hundred and sixty-one dollars, and then you go by households and everything, that, just that alone, you're looking at a quarter of a million dollars to try to recover if something were to happen. So, now you come in, you can get cyber insurance too, which will help you with that, they usually have more teams, um, you can touch on it, sir.
Uh, we have a separate response team from, uh, it's a collaboration of state agencies, the National Guard, and volunteers from across the state, we have three hundred and sixty-three volunteers at this point, and we come in and help out whenever somebody gets attacked to help get them back to initial operating capacity.
Yeah, that's, there's really a lot that went in depth here and I'm trying to keep it in very broad aspect. Um, if anybody has any further in-depth questions, please feel free to contact me afterwards, I'd be happy to answer them. But this was one page of about a hundred and forty-seven, I think, so you can just imagine the kind of stuff that's all detailed in there.
Does anyone have any questions right now that aren't as detailed for Michael and Matt? Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Our next presentation is on natural playgrounds, Bryce.
Yeah, I wanna come around here to see, I don't play. So this is our presentation on natural playgrounds for Horicon. Uh, some of the reasons we're looking at these is we're working on the park plan, which we'll see very soon here, and these are some more cost-effective options for us. So this is actually one of the parks I went to in London, uh, it's William Par- or William Parnell Park, the locals call it Pineapple Park because there's a giant pineapple in the middle of it. It's one of those everywhere there, although like you see kids on it all the time. Uh, that's how my park grew up, it was hard to take, get like pictures of kids in there and I didn't wanna be like that creepy guy taking pictures, so this is just stock images, I'm sorry, they're blurry. Uh, but kids love this stuff, like they're jumping from rocks, climbing up them. Their D P W is saying that it's super easy if something breaks, they can just hop in and fix it, it's very modular. Uh, so this is kind of an aerial view of that park, uh, but super cool. Uh, so then, if we were to do a natural playground, there is currently only one in the state, the second one's gonna go live later next year. Uh, so the first one's in Cam Rock County Park in Dayton County, so this is that one. So they had, actually had like their Department of Public Works cut down trees, they did everything in house for this one. One of the companies we're looking at working with is Fin and Stock Natural Playground Company. Absolutely, there's some of the examples of stuff they've done. So they also have like, they'll cut down the trees, you can use them as benches, that we are not paying thousands of dollars for the metal ones to be brought in. This is another example of how they had climbing equipment set up for children and more benches. This is another deal that same playground, we probably won't turn the sprinklers on for the children here when they're playing on it. We put that in. This is another option they did, this one's out in California. Can you see any meeting? Uh, it's another option too, so they are very big on promoting stability in kids and the hand-eye coordination. Uh, so they give kids a lot of opportunities to climb up and fall off things or jump on them, do whatever. This is one of those examples too of the natural benches. Another big thing too is they love using rocks, so you'll see that a lot in these, they'll put in ropes between them so you can walk between them, climb on them. So picture a little kid looking up at one. So this one's super cool, this is actually in funding national tours. Uh, so this one, they use a combination of natural playgrounds and modular equipment. Uh, so let's see, they incorporate the hills here. They also, a lot of them, if you use like a dirt or sand playground, they'll have a little spot where you can wash your hands so you're not dragging mud home and then your parents aren't hating the children. Uh, that way you have those options. Some of these will also have a little, it's like a mesh, uh, item around them so if you do fall off, you kind of bounce up, you won't just hit the ground. This is another one too that's near us, this one is actually in the middle of the city. They actually made like pavilions out of the trees, but everything was sourced locally, this one, they went a little bit more unique with the carving of benches. They also use sand in this one, you can see again, they got that hand washing and feet washing area. Uh, but you can see the kids love it, this is during a normal day. Uh, another one we looked at is P D Play, uh, so this one, they're a smaller company, but they have a lot more items that'll meet our budget, this is considered a small playground. This is what they consider a medium-sized budget playground. And this is what they consider a higher-end budget playground. So as we're looking at doing this, so what's the cost for buying stock, they have a couple services. Uh, so designing, like we're looking at potentially Disher Park, it's ten to twenty thousand, and then playgrounds can be fifty to eighty, uh, it can also be less or they can be more, depends on how much we wanna use manpower to get them up. Uh, the P D Play I thought was really cool because they stick to your budget, so if you want a low-end budget playground, you're looking at ten to fifteen thousand, medium is fifteen to twenty-five. Uh, I talked to them about a large budget, they said the sky is the limit, but no one's ever said that to them, so twenty-five to a hundred is realistic. Another option too down the road, uh, there's one, a big change for L E D playgrounds as well. This is something I got to see in London, that they're starting to install places. But the daytime it looks normal, but at night, it's really unique, makes a great advertising piece for the city as well. And that's my presentation, so do you have any questions on natural playgrounds?
What parks are you targeting?
Uh, we're looking at Disher Park, Riverbend, plenty of what's all, um, that have really old equipment would be like a bigger priority, and then everything on the park climbing, food, all the playgrounds, so that'd be a list, but hopefully everywhere.
All right, thanks Bryce.
Thank you.
Agenda fourteen is acting on the engineering contract for the Marshland Crossing Business Park Street Utility Extension Project.
Included in your packet is a proposal from Kunkel Engineering for Marshland and Marshland Crossing Business Park Street Utility Extension Engineering Services, and Don is here to take it away.
So Kristin called and asked, uh, to put a contract proposal together for, get the road and utilities in the Marshland Crossing based on proposed development that the city's been discussing. Um, so what I included was a map in that proposal so you could see what this all entailed. Um, if you look at the map, we'd be coming off the east intersection that we built and we'd be stubbing our road in about sixteen hundred feet to the north, straight north, and it was terminating the cul-de-sac. Um, back when we did the T I D number five improvements, uh, and that's when John here did their initial expansion, we stuffed sewer and water along the railroad tracks and then salted the railroad tracks, just salted the woods that's out there. So that's where the water and sewer, water enforcement sits today, it's just on the south edge of the wood. So we need to pick the utilities up at that point, we need to extend them to the south and over to the west to where the future cul-de-sac is, and then down towards State Highway thirty-three. Um, that would be the initial phase, so that would include a street, sewer and water extension, storm sewer pond, and it would require a lift station to serve that site, but that was the force main that we stuffed under there back in T I D number five. So all that is part of phase number one, so in the proposal I broke out, but I called the base bid, that's that. And then the second part is the loop in the water main along State Highway thirty-three to the east and tie it in right by Sacred Heart Church. That's the second part, that's the part that I referred to as alternate, yeah, water main loop alternate. So I broke that total cost apart so you can see if you don't wanna do the water main loop now, that we take that cost off it. But the base bid, the phase one, that includes the street, sewer water, force main lift station, storm pond, uh, includes the surveys that are required out there, soil boring geotech report, so it'll cover everything we need to, to get that done and get the lots made on the street right away out there. Are there any questions?
When you said there's sewer and water coming from across the tracks?
Yep.
Why do we need water going?
To, to loop it, because it would be a long dead end.
Okay, so that would make a?
Right, it would make the loop, so it'd be fresh water and it'd have water feed from both ways if there was ever a break or an issue up by the railroad tracks, it'd be fed from Sacred Heart out that way. That's the reason for looping.
If, if there was water, I was just asking the question.
Yep. Anytime you got dead ends, it's ideal if you can, you're able to, I mean, there's still dead ends around the city here and there. Any other questions? The, I don't know, did you guys, what were total costs, what did you estimate for this?
Pardon?
Did you guys go through, did you guys look at budgeting for this or estimates or?
No, this is, all this kind of been occurring.
So, for the, for the phase one, we were looking at a cost of about two point two million. And then the water main loop itself, we're looking at about four hundred, four hundred twenty thousand. And to give you an idea on the water main loop, uh, that's about twenty-five hundred feet from that entrance at Highway thirty-three to, uh, Sacred Heart, the entrance to Sacred Heart.
How soon does engineering need to start for this?
What I understand?
Now.
Right away?
Now.
We could be discussing some of that later, but, yeah.
Whether the loop is in there as an alternate, I would think it would be prudent of the city to go ahead with design of that and ultimately, like we go out for bid, you can at that time, if the bids come in high for the loop, decide if you want to do it at that time or not. Anything that is potentially going on right now would probably be able to exist out there without them. So ultimately, it would come down, uh, to what the bid prices would look like.
That's all for the presentation?
Yes.
Um, with that, I, I would suggest looking into the loop because that may affect water quality in that area and would also improve water quality that we already have out at Sacred Heart, because those are very long dead ends. And there have been some complaints and water quality issues because of that, so this would have helped improve the water quality in that area freely.
That makes sense. Is there any other questions for Don and Cody? If not, is there a motion to act on the engineering contract?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion, is this for the two eighty-three?
Yep.
That would include the water main loop?
Yep.
So, motion to approve the contract for the Marshland Crossing Utility Extension Project, engineering contract, sorry, as presented by Kunkel Engineering, amount to two hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Second. So further discussion from council? All right, if not, please call the roll.
As I understand, this is a motion to approve the proposal from Kunkel Engineering Group in an amount not to exceed two hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for engineering services to include design, C R S, and inspection for Marshland, Marshland Crossing Business Park Street and Utility Extension Project. Boris Fromme?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Bansman?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Don Miller?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Motion carries, agenda fifteen, acting on a request for reimbursement of the street use permit fees from the Horicon Historical Society, first.
So, you're back, you got the letter for the Horicon Historical Society asking for reimbursement for the street use permit fee they used, uh, for the mounted history tour in their ice cream social. So, looking to make a motion to approve the reimbursement of permit fees in the amount of two hundred dollars to the Horicon Historical Society.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Is there further discussion? It's pretty technical, correct?
Yeah, they, they, yes, basically, it comes down to when they remember to submit a request, but yes, we have, uh, reimbursed them for this before.
Any further discussion? Now, quick, please call the roll.
This is a motion to approve Horicon Historical Society's request for reimbursement of street use permit fees in the amount of two hundred dollars. Boris Fromme?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Bansman?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Don Miller?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
carries. Agenda sixteen, acting on the change order number two from Sopper Sewer Water LLC for South Cedar Mill Reconstruction Project, first.
Uh, make a motion to approve the change order number two from Sopper Sewer Water LLC for South Cedar Mill Street Reconstruction Project. As provided in your packet.
I'll second. Is there discussion?
Uh, just information, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, and this is a reduction in what the cost were estimated to be?
Correct, yes, forty-five thousand six hundred forty-nine dollars and twenty cent decrease over contract price.
Yep. Just so you guys are aware.
Any other further discussion? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
This is a motion to approve change order number two from Soper Sewer and Water LLC in an amount of forty-five thousand six hundred forty-nine dollar twenty cent decrease for the South Cedar and Mill Street Reconstruction Project. Forrest Frommey?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Don Miller?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
The Gen seventeen, act on the twenty twenty-three agreement for the senior dining program of Dodge County Human Services and Health Department, Forrest.
Make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three agreement for senior dining program with Dodge County Human Services and Health Department as provided in your packet. This is a year-to-year thing, no change.
I'll second.
Is there further discussion? Alright, not clerk, please call the roll.
Forrest Frommey?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Don Miller?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Motion carries. The Gen eighteen is acting on the write-off of ambulance warrant fee invoices, Forrest.
Another yearly topic, Forrest, the motion to there's a motion to approve the write-off of ambulance warrant fee invoices in the amount of eleven thousand three hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
Any further discussion?
What does SDC stand for?
State Debt Collection Program.
Thank you.
They're, they're a phenomenal resource, very, very good at their job.
Anything additional? If not, please call the roll.
This is a motion to approve the write-off of ambulance fees, warrant fees, and associated interest in the amount of eleven thousand three hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents as provided in the council packet. Forrest Frommey?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Don Miller?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Second page, Gen item nineteen, acting on the budget transfer to fund the purchase of a Protec SP ten L snow pusher loader, Forrest.
Motion to approve budget transfer to increase account number one zero zero dash five nine eight three three zero dash seven nine one, transfer to capital equipment, decreasing account one zero zero dash five three three two three zero dash eight two nine, city garage outlay, other capital improvement outlay. Increasing account number four one zero four nine two one zero zero, other financing sources, transfer from general fund, and increasing account four one zero five three three four zero eight ten machinery equipment, capital equipment in the amount of six thousand seven hundred one dollars to purchase a Protec SP one zero L snow pusher loader for Gasper's truck.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion on the board?
This is something we'll use to clean up the snow more efficiently and also during our snow pickup that we've evolved downtown, be able to make it cleaner. We'll also have a backup then for our loader snow pusher, and this will fit on the back home.
Great. Any other further discussion? Alright, not clerk, please call the roll.
Forrest did a pretty darn good job of that, so I won't even repeat the motion. Forrest Frommey?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Don Miller?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Gen twenty is acting on EMS agreement between the City of Horicon and the Village of Kukaski, Forrest.
Make a motion to approve the emergency medical service agreement with the Village of Kukaski as provided in your packet.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? Is this the same amount as last year?
It is in the same amount. Essentially, the difference in between this contract and the last contract that was presented a year ago is we've removed the month-to-month clause and we've basically made it an annual contract. This, I think we're long past the month-to-month status with Kukaski.
Any further discussion on this? Alright, not clerk, please call the roll.
Forrest Frommey?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Don Miller?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Next item is to act on the budget transfer to fund the purchase of Stinger Spike Systems, Forrest.
Motion to increase the police outlay, other capital equipment outlay, account number one zero zero dash five two two one two one dash eight one nine in the amount of two thousand twenty-eight dollars. Decrease account one zero zero five two two one one zero dash one five four, police administration health insurance by the same amount to fund the purchase of the Stinger Spike System.
Second. Any discussion on the Stinger Spikes? Alright, if not, clerk, please call the roll.
Forrest Frommey?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Don Miller?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Next item is to act on the budget transfer to fund the additional compost grain, Forrest.
Make a motion to increase account number one zero zero dash five three three six five zero dash two nine one, recycling contractor recycling, and decrease account one zero zero five three three two three one dash eight two nine, city garage outlay, other capital improvement outlay by five thousand two hundred dollars to fund the additional compost grain.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the compost grain? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
Forrest Frommey?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Don Miller?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Next item is to act on the budget transfer to fund the purchase of some street signage, Forrest.
Chris, and think from that amount to be twenty-two...
Sixteen.
Twenty-two sixteen.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to increase account number one zero zero five three 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 seven zero dash three four one, traffic control supplies, signs, post hardware. And approve the budget transfer from the purchase of the street signs in the amount of twenty-two sixteen. I'm missing the count number in there.
You're going to decrease one zero zero five three three two thirty-one eight two nine, city garage outlay, other capital, probably.
Thank you.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the street signage? Are these replacing old ones or just building up a pile?
Ah, this would be replacing inventory that was used, because inventory is running low.
Any further discussion? Not clerk, please call the roll.
Forrest Frommey?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Don Miller?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, act on the budget transfer to fund the purchase of a Ruber with accessories, Forrest.
Motion to increase the police outlay, other capital equipment outlay, account number one zero zero five two two one two one dash one eight one nine in the amount of two thousand two hundred twelve dollars. And decrease account one zero zero five two two one one zero dash one five four, police administration health insurance by the same amount to fund the purchase of a Ruber AR five five six with accessories.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Not clerk, please call the roll.
Forrest Frommey?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Don Miller?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Next item is to act on the twenty twenty-two budget transfers per our packet, Forrest.
Motion to approve the twenty twenty-two budget transfers provided in the memo from clerk as provided in your packet dated December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Is there further discussion on these three budget transfers? Not clerk, please call the roll.
Forrest Frommey?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Don Miller?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Next item is to act on the budget transfer to fund the purchase of a radar unit for the squad, Forrest.
Motion to increase police outlay, other capital equipment. Account one zero zero five two two one two one dash eight one nine in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, decreasing account one zero zero five two two one one zero dash one five four, police administration health insurance by the same amount to fund the purchase of a radar unit for squad.
Second. Is there a discussion on it? Alright, if not, clerk, please call the roll.
Forrest Frommey?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Don Miller?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is the, next item is to act on the write-off of delinquent personal property taxes, Forrest.
Motion to approve write-off of delinquent personal property taxes in the amount of fourteen thousand thirty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. Details are in your packet.
Anyone want a second for questions?
I am, great.
Let's give a second.
Second. Now we can talk.
Out of the fourteen thousand dollars in front of you tonight, that is actually a write-off of seventy-two percent of the total delinquent personal property taxes that are on the books right now for the city. Out of the amount that is in front of you tonight of that fourteen thousand dollars, eighty-eight percent of that belongs to Mallard Manufacturing. And as I say, with any write-off, certainly once we've written it off, if the individual comes in and wants to pay it, I will take their money.
It's valuable writing it off.
It, otherwise it sits on your books for no reason whatsoever as a receivable that you'll, it's sitting as an asset that you will never have, that you do not have.
But why aren't, why don't they pay it?
Because they don't want it.
Why can't this go onto the property?
It, this is a prop, it's personal property. You can't make them pay it. Well, I mean, who else would want to take them to small claims court?
So I don't think that taking Matt Sanborn to small claims court over fifteen dollars and eighty-eight cents is probably worthwhile.
The big dollar ones that you're looking on here is at Mallard Manufacturing.
So can they go to small claims court? Sorry.
I don't realize who Mallard Manufacturing is.
Nope.
North, or South Hopper Street.
The canning pit.
Thank you. I got it now.
You caught on.
Didn't know that was the name of, the official name of it.
Please call the roll. Maybe they're gonna have some money.
I won't hold my breath.
Just one, one question. I guess it's maybe been kind answered, but read the list over the, there are active people in the community that owe money, but there's no recourse or recoup yet.
There's nothing with teeth that would allow you to go after them unless you wanted to pay money on an attorney to go after the funds that they owe. There's nothing you can do.
And there's nothing we can do with Mallard Manufacturing. I mean, I'm just because we did, you know.
Mallard Manufacturing doesn't even exist as a company anymore, so no, there's nothing, I mean. If a company goes bankrupt.
Okay.
There essentially like comes receivable sitting on your books. You have it listed as an asset that you're never going to recover. You're overstating your books. The auditors frown on that.
This is the time to clean up, what, ten years of books?
Yeah, I have not brought, because the council obviously has a general distaste for the write-off of monies that they think they're going to receive, but they're not going to. So I generally do not like to bring this because it's an argument generally over time. So I haven't brought the write-off of delinquent personal property taxes in years.
So the ones that say beyond statute of limitations, there's nothing we can do anyways because it's too long.
And again, all that you're doing is sending them a letter telling them they owe.
Right. So we couldn't take them to court anyways because of beyond the statute of limitations.
Ultimately, the only people on here with sizable judgments is Mallard Manufacturing. Which again, accounts for seventy-eight percent of the amount that you're writing off. The amount that you're writing off is fourteen thousand dollars.
I agree. I just feel like it's petty, like if we're at a, well, just one for ninety-four cents.
Oh, I, I agree, the small ones.
Those small ones?
Beyond the statute of limitations doesn't really matter, really, but...
And all the ones that are after that from twenty sixteen through twenty nineteen, as noted on this sheet, are all out of business. If they're out of business, you're not going to be able to find them on.
So the normal process is just to continue to send them letters and then they can just...
You can send them bills, tax bills, letters.
And they can just...
As you can see on the list, it, a lot of it, I'm not going to spend a ton of my time sending out letters multiple times a year for somebody that owes eleven dollars and twenty-nine cents. I'm going to spend seventy dollars in wages sending a letter telling him he owes eleven bucks. For some of these smaller ones on here too, and this is from when the city used to tax out at the campground. Like there are things like decks and stuff like that. A few years ago, the city made a very wise decision to stop doing that. So you don't have near the amount of delinquent personal property taxes you used to because of now. And ultimately, personal property tax, the state is slowly doing away with personal property tax. So I'd say probably in five years, you won't even be charging people for personal property taxes. State's going to get rid of it.
Is there any further discussion? Alright, not clerk, please call the roll.
This is a motion to authorize the write-off of delinquent personal property taxes in the amount of fourteen thousand thirty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents as printed in the council packet. Forrest Frommey?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Don Miller?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, act on the payment of twenty twenty-two extrication training for the fire department to include funding, Forrest.
So the motion to increase account number one zero zero five two 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 one zero dash three two six, training firemen by two thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. In decreasing account one zero zero five one one nine nine zero dash three nine nine contingency fund by the same amount with payment of the twenty twenty-two extrication training for the fire department.
Is there a second?
A second.
That is the balance of what they have available to finish paying off for the training, unless the training cost is covered by other departments coming to the training and paying separately for it that way as well. So that should turn out to be a pretty good, pretty good deal.
Is there any further discussion on the training? Alright, not clerk, please call the roll.
Forrest Frommey?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Don Miller?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Next item, act on the budget transfer to fund the purchase of education gear, tech rescue suits, Forrest.
Alright, motion to decrease account number one zero zero All right, motion to decrease account number one zero zero five two 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 one zero dash two four three, equipment testing by two thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars, and account one zero zero five two 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 one zero dash two nine two, communication system expense by one thousand one hundred and seventy dollars, and increasing account one zero zero five two 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 one one dash eight one nine, other capital equipment outlay by three thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars to fund the purchase of extrication gear.
A second.
Is there any discussion? Now, clerk, please call the roll.
Boris Fromme?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Don Miller?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
The next item is to act on the wastewater lottery operator three in charge position, Forrest.
Um, like make a motion to hire Noah A. Strick as our wastewater water operator three in charge position at the current ordinance rate for that position, twenty-nine fourteen?
I thought the?
Uh, twelve twenty-one.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Any discussion on our position? Now, clerk, please call the roll.
Boris Fromme?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Don Miller?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, operator licenses, Dick?
No, none.
Agenda thirty-two, act on the financial statement for November of twenty-twenty-two, Forrest.
Uh, motion to approve the financial statement provided in our packet for November twenty-twenty-two. Second.
Is there any discussion? Now, clerk, please call the roll.
Boris Fromme?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Don Miller?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, acting on the bills for November, Forrest.
Motion to approve the bills for November, for November twenty-twenty-two in the amount of two million nine hundred and ninety-one thousand nine hundred and three dollars and ninety-five cents.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
Boris Fromme?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Don Miller?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Uh, the next motion is to adjourn the full session. Do we have a, a motion to adjourn the full session?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
Give Bryce. Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Boris Fromme?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Don Miller?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are in full session. I am making the screen.